I will call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order at 7:30. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Patricia Pietzou and Alderman at Large, Older Woman at Large Lori Wilshire will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Alderman Gidge.
Here.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Aldermanwoman Malize Gola.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
We have fifteen members present.
Also present is Honorable Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Stephen A. Bolton. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Well, first of all, we had our inauguration a couple of days ago, and I thought the ceremony went really well. I want to thank the inauguration committee, the committee that organized it, as well as the city clerk. So, welcome again. We're really happy to have you. It's really interesting to see all the new seating arrangements and all the new faces, so I think it will be an interesting and productive term. Wednesday, tomorrow morning, I'm holding the Coffee with the Mayor at Georgia Bell's at 8:00 a.m. If anybody would like to get up early and attend, you're all, of course, welcome. We will be scheduling town hall meetings in each of the wards over the next few months, so we'll be in touch about that as well. The last week or ten days, we've had a couple of storms, one neither easy to handle. There was the ice storm. Those are always difficult. Even though the depth is not as great as it can be, the ice is more difficult than snow, really. And then we had twelve to fourteen inches this past weekend. So, Department of Public Works is still cleaning up. There are some places where there are sightline problems, and they'll be addressing those and continuing to clean up as time goes on. And if you have specific questions or things you think should be handled, please don't hesitate to call or contact Lisa Photo or me about anything in any of the neighborhoods. Finally, Mr. President, I wanted to mention the passing of Judy Berman, who I think some people know. She's not been active in city government for quite a while, but she served, I believe, two terms on the school board and also two terms as Ward Two Alderman. She was Vice President of Berman Real Estate, which she owned with her husband, Richard, or Dick Berman. She was active in everything, the rotaries and many charitable organizations. Berman was a very prominent realtor for many years, and it is sad to see that she has passed away, and I just wanted to give my condolences to Dick and her surviving family members and just wish them the best. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Are there any responses to the remarks of the mayor? Recognition period?
There is none.
Reading of the minutes of the previous meetings and public hearing. Elder Woman Wilshire?
Thank you. I move that the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of December 26, 2017, and the public hearing conducted by the Committee on Infrastructure on December 27, 2017 be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended.
Motion is that the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of December 26, 2017, and those of the public hearing conducted by the Committee on Infrastructure on December 27, 2017 be accepted, placed on file, and that the readings be suspended. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Communications, Alderwoman Wilshire?
Thank you. I move that all communications be read by title only.
Motion is that communications be read by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Communication from Michael A. Joseph, relative to resignations for the Citizens Advisory Committee for Community Grants.
Alderwoman Wilshire?
Thank you. I move to accept and place on file.
Motion is to accept the communication and place it on file. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Communication from Patricia D. Pietzou, City Clerk, relative to NRO 5-6, compensation.
Alderwoman Malize Golia.
Yes, I would move to accept, place on file, and waive the provisions of NRO 5-6.
Motion is to accept the communication, to place it on file, and to waive the provisions of NRO 5-6. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Communication from Patricia D. Pietzou, City Clerk, relative to a citywide election to fill vacancy on Board of Education.
Alderwoman Karen.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept and place on file.
Motion is to accept the communication and to place it on file. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Two speakers have signed up.
Good evening. My name is Paula Johnson, and I'd like to welcome all the new members to the Board of Aldermen, all these new faces. Alderman Gidge and I go back way back to his days on radio. We had fun then, didn't we? Those were the good old days. With that said, I'm here to discuss the Performing Arts Center. I'm a little bit, well, I shouldn't be surprised that this would be one of the first things on the agenda for the new year, but I am, given the fact that on the election it was a non-binding referendum, and it only passed by 155 votes. Given the fact that it's a city of 57,000, 57 voters in the election, and we didn't even have that many come out to vote, only like 18.81 percent came out to vote. So that really isn't a landslide to say that we really need to spend 15.5 million on this building. I'm a little bit concerned. I'm concerned because our taxes went up 2.88 percent this past year, and that was only because we used 7.1 percent, I believe, of surplus money. What would the real cost of our taxes have been if we didn't use that surplus money to put down on the tax rate? People think that Nashua is thriving like the rest of the country. Yeah, we're starting to feel a little bit more movement in this country, but if we have high taxes, who's going to really want to come to Nashua? We have, in the school district, two buildings that are in deplorable condition that we learned about last year when we found out that we wanted to buy Alex's Shoe Store old building. What are we going to do with that? That's over $10 million worth of building repairs. Where is our priority? Is our priority in the Performing Arts Center, or is our priority in our children in this city? Because we always pick the kids against every project. But let's be honest here. The kids are our future. The Performing Arts Center is not going to get the books in the classroom to kids that need it. It's not going to correct things on these schools if you're bonding 15.5 million dollars. Mr. Johnson, Joe Johnson, blogs a lot on The Telegraph, and I read it sometimes, sometimes I don't. I don't have time to do all this anymore. Life goes on when you leave the Board of Aldermen. You only come in for important things, and I wasn't even coming in for this tonight. I was coming in because of lack of snow plowing in the city, and the quality of services went down between the 23rd and the 25th of these storms this year, which I'll discuss later on because that's not on the agenda. But I'd like to read a little bit of what he said here. "It is beyond irresponsible for city officials to consider buying Alex's Shoe Store building unless and until an inspection report on the building has been obtained and reviewed. This article makes no reference to any such report." After Burke Street fiasco, where renovations turned out to be a multiple estimate, it could only be presumed that city officials are incapable of judging a building's suitability for desire use and be the project cost for Alex's building or similarity off base. In regard to the Burke Street property, Mayor Donches recently said, "Once we started looking at it in more detail, we learned that it was going to cost considerably more than $10 million to $15 million." Nashua Telegraph, one August. "When buying property, reasonable prudent folks hire an inspector to prepare a written report." You wouldn't buy a house unless you have an inspector these days because you don't want to walk into a money pit. I don't know if anybody saw that movie many years ago, The Money Pit, but that's what happens, money pit. And we don't have a money pit. We don't have a lot of money in this city on taxpayers' dollars. "The goal is to avoid post-purchase surprises, the hidden problems that would costly, would be costly to fix. This due diligence should be part of the city's standing operating procedures rather than spending money on an option to buy, which would make sense only if the building were likely to sell quickly. The city should get an inspector's report, actually, an independent inspector's report, not somebody from the city. Always has to be independent, so we always have, in my opinion, clean hands." "The Alex's Shoe Building has been vacant for months. Paying for an option simply enriches the building's own. To pay for such an option is a misuse of public funds. Even if the city employee has required expertise to inspect the building, an outside expert should be hired." Gee, I just said that. I didn't even read that yet. Great minds, I guess, think alike. "If serious problems are missed, the city can look to the inspector or the inspector's insurance companies for readiness. No such redress can be had from city employees." Cummings has previously said that the conservative estimates show that the center will bring in more than 1.3 million a year to downtown businesses. Does Mr. Cummings have a factual basis for his estimate? If so, and what does he base his estimate? If not, why does he offer an estimate? In short, the city needs to spend work on its performing arts center unofficially and publish reports prepared by experts that show in detail the condition of the building, the likely renovation costs, and the likely sources of revenue from the project. Off the cuff, estimates are fine for small projects, as is new athletic fields. When it comes to multimillion-dollar projects, due diligence is required. There seems to have been no such due diligence. Those who oppose the doing of this due diligence need to change their ways. If they are unwilling to do so, they should be replaced." Well, you know, we have a new board here, and I know that everybody's going to be taking, everything is fresh and new to everybody, so I hope everybody's going to really take a look at this with open eyes because we can't afford another mistake. We've got Burke Street Building sitting there. Are we going to sell that building? What are we going to do? You know, there's a lot of problems. Who's going to want to buy a building with problems? So I hope that the board in this coming year, we're going to be looking at the needs of the city versus the wants of the city and thinking about the taxpayers' pocketbook. I want to wish you all great luck, and I'll be talking to you about something else after. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Doris Hoenze, 15th Ward Terrace. I came here because on the agenda you have a letter about the vacancy at the Board of Ed, so I'm kind of anxious to see that. But when I was looking at your agenda, I also noticed that you have a letter, NRO 5-6, about compensation, and I was sort of puzzled as to why only the Aldermen would have an ordinance to withhold a stipend from someone who missed three meetings. We don't have that on the Board of Ed. We don't have it for the Board of Public Works. We currently have someone who's been out for five months due to health, but I just, and I know you're all new, so I know you'll think of it carefully. I just, I thought if we're going to do something, it ought to be equitable across the city, and I trust you'll do your job that you're elected to do. Thank you.
That ordinance was passed a number of years ago.
Yeah, I'm unaware of it, and...
To deal with the Board of Aldermen. I would expect that if the Board of Education wanted to deal with that issue, they would deal with it with a policy of the Board of Education.
But we couldn't withhold the stipend because it comes from the city. My understanding, we can make a policy to encourage...
I think you need to discuss that with Counsel's Office to determine whether it can be done by policy of the Board of Education.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderwoman Wilshire?
I believe we have another speaker that missed the sign-up sheet, if you would so allow.
If there's no objections, I'll allow Mr. Fokus to speak.
Welcome, everybody, and congratulations to all our new Aldermen and Aldermen-at-large. I'd like to just tell you a quick little story and thinking past 30 years. Jim, I see Brian, Steve Bolton, Ernie Jettie, who rented from me. Thirty years ago, took a big shot in downtown Nashua. Everyone said it was crazy to invest in downtown Nashua.
Can you give your name and address for the record?
Oh, I apologize. My name is Bill Fokus, 185 Main Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. All I'm saying is, like I said, 30 years ago, everyone says, "Don't do anything in downtown Nashua. You're going to lose everything. It's not worth your while." What I'm asking everybody here is, just take an open look at this thing. You know what? You've got to take chances in life. And 30 years later, I'm still here, and I plan on being around for a little longer. So with that, I welcome everybody, and hopefully we do the right thing for our great city of Nashua.
Petitions?
Petition for a street discontinuance, a portion of Amber Street formerly utilized as a part of the jug handle, which was reconfigured into a full signalized intersection.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to grant the petition for street discontinuance.
Is there any discussion? Alderman Dowd?
Quickly, there's a, was a jug handle on the property now by the new mall, with the new mall that's asking for this, and they had given us land from the, for Sharon Avenue, and it was like a exchange, if you will. So we forgot at the time to do the street discontinuance, so that's what we're here for.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the petition for street discontinuance is granted. Nominations, appointments, and elections?
To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Daniel C. Hansberry, 20 Shelley Drive, Nashua. To the Board of Assessors for a term to be indefinite at the term, at the pleasure of the mayor. I have this day appointed Michael Buckley of 207 Main Street, Suite 3, Nashua, to the Downtown Improvement Committee for a term to expire January 31, 2021. I have this day appointed Ben Clemmons of 188 Ash Street, Nashua, to the Downtown Improvement Committee as an alternate for a term to expire January 31, 2021. I have this day appointed Jill Gage, 226 Bardemus Trail, Nashua, to the Downtown Improvement Committee for a term to expire January 31, 2021. I have this day appointed William J. Dubois Jr., 11 Pickering Way, Nashua, to the Hunt Memorial Board of Trustees for a term to expire January 31, 2023. I have this day appointed Tim Cummings, the Economic Development Director, to 29 Main Street, to the Hunt Memorial Board of Trustees for a term to expire January 31, 2023. I have this day appointed Stacy Vigno, 6 New Hampshire Avenue, Nashua, to the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee for a term to expire January 31, 2021. And I have this day appointed Sean McGinnis, 30 Shelbourne Road, Nashua, to the Planning Board as an alternate for a term to expire March 31, 2019, and respectfully request these appointments be confirmed.
Alderwoman Karen?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
Motion is to accept the appointments of the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reports of committees, if there are no objections, the report of the Finance Committee of December 26, 2017 will be accepted and placed on file, and if there are no objections, the report of the December 27, 2017 Committee on Infrastructure will be accepted and placed on file. Written reports from liaisons?
There are none.
Confirmation of the mayor's appointments?
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions?
There are none.
Unfinished business ordinances?
There are none.
New business resolutions?
First reading of Resolution 18-001 authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $15,500,000 for the Performing Arts Center located at 201 Main Street.
Additional sponsors, anyone who'd like to be added as a sponsor, Alderwoman Karen, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tenza, Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Malize Golia, Alderman Laws, Alderwoman Wilshire, Alderwoman Cle, and myself, and Alderwoman Kelly, and Alderman Dowd. Oh, Alderman Dowd?
I have additional...
Okay. Alderman Gidge, you wish to be added as a sponsor?
Yes. Are we to vote on the 15 million?
No.
No, we're just, it, the, our rules allow addition of sponsors at the first reading of the resolution.
Okay. Please add me into it.
And Alderwoman Gathright. Alderman Dowd, you have a motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to accept the first reading of our 18-001 by roll call, assign it to the Budget Review Committee, and that a public hearing be scheduled for Monday, January 22, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldomatic Chamber.
Motion is to accept the first reading of our 18-001 by roll call, assign it to the Budget Review Committee, and that a public hearing be scheduled for Monday, January 22, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldomatic Chamber. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malize Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
We have 15 yeas.
Motion carries.
First reading of Resolution 18-002 authorizing the purchase of land and buildings at 201 Main Street, map 81, Lot 3, for the Performing Arts Center.
Additional sponsors, Alderwoman Wilshire, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Laws, Alderwoman Cle, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Malize Golia, Alderman Tenza, Alderman O'Brien, and Alderwoman Harriet Gathright, and myself. And our 18-002 will be assigned to the Personnel, to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and to the Nashua City Planning Board.
Second, first reading of Resolution 18-003 authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $2,575,000 for various improvements at the Solid Waste Department, Forhill's landfill, and the purchase of six refuse trucks.
Any additional sponsors for that one? Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Karen, Alderwoman Malize Golia, Alderman O'Brien, and Alderman Gidge. Alderman Dowd, you have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the first reading of our 18-003 by roll call, assign it to the Budget Review Committee, and that the Board of Public Works, and that a public hearing be scheduled for Monday, January 22, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldomatic Chamber.
Motion is to accept the first reading of our 18-003 by roll call, assign it to the Budget Review Committee and the Board of Public Works, and that a public hearing be scheduled for Monday, January 22, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldomatic Chamber. Is there any discussion? If not, would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Yes. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malize Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
We have 15 yeas.
Motion carries. New business ordinances?
First reading of ordinance 18-001 prohibiting parking on both sides of the entire length of Front Street.
Are there any additional sponsors? Our ordinance 18-001 will be assigned to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of ordinance 18-002 amending the order of business on the Board of Aldermen.
Any additional sponsors? Alderwoman Wilshire, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Karen, Alderman O'Brien. Our 18-002 will be assigned to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of ordinance 18-003 regarding suspension of the Board of Aldermen rules.
Additional sponsors? Alderwoman Wilshire, Alderman Dowd, and Alderman O'Brien. And 018-003 will be assigned to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of ordinance 18-004 regarding acceptance of procedural motions without objection.
Additional sponsors? Alderwoman Wilshire, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Karen, and Alderman O'Brien. And 018-004 will be assigned to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for general public comment. Two people have signed up. I guess Chris isn't here. Paula Johnson?
Good evening again, Paula Johnson. I still live here in Nashua. First of all, I want to let Mrs. Hoenze know that NRO-5, when I was on the Board of Aldermen, I had that written because we had several members. Attorney Bolton might remember. Alderman McCarthy, Alderman Wilshire might remember. We had several members who just didn't show up, and they were getting paid for not showing up in committee meetings at the full board. And you know what? They're supposed to be here representing the people. They shouldn't be paid if you don't show up, you know, if you don't go to work, you don't get paid if you don't show up here to represent the people and vote on important legislation and being at committee meetings, then you shouldn't get paid. If it's a medical problem, that was different, but I wrote that, and I think I'm pretty proud of writing that, too, you know? I also wrote the legislation that if you park in a handicap spot, there's a $200 fine, you know? People have to be respectful of people who have a disability, and unfortunately, they're not. So I think there was some pretty good legislation that I wrote that took care of the needs of the people of this city. Talking about the needs of the people of this city, we had some pretty horrible storms other than this last one, but on the 23rd of December to 25th. I had a conversation with Director Photos. It wasn't a pretty conversation. I had called your office, mayor. I spoke with Pedro, who said that I seemed to be a little bit upset. So Kim Kleiner called me, and she and I had no problems. She sent me information because I was told by Director Photos that you only stand and salt streets on an as-needed basis, and that this hasn't been done for nine years going through the neighborhoods and salting and sanding, which is not true because my street's always been. I don't think it was because the previous mayor lived there either because I don't live on the same street as her. She lives down on a different street than me. But rough condition because I know it couldn't have been because on Facebook, and I took pictures of the conversations on Facebook on the Nashua Civic Sounding Board until Mr. Shea shut it down because, I guess he didn't want to hear all the complaints that was going on in the city because there was a lot of complaints, and the former Alderman from Ward 6, Ben Clemmons, sent you a message on Facebook saying, "Could you recast some salt and sand in Ward 6?" So the city was in horrible condition, especially when you live in a development that have a hill or slight incline. I guess people forget that there's no traction on ice, you just keep sliding. And I know it wasn't the workers that made this decision. It had to come from administration because the workers wouldn't just not put down the trucks and dump the salt and sand throughout the neighborhoods. It had to come from higher up. So I hope we're not skimping on salt and sand in the winter because that's a safety issue, considering, like I said, our taxes went up 2.88%. The quality of services in these storms have gone down, so maybe we should get a refund on this part of our taxes because we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing. And even on the main roads, on Daniel West Highway, I would get out of work 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night with these, some of these storms, and there'd be big ice ruts in the road because we're not doing what we need to do. And when you have the warmer days and you put the salt and sand down, the sun and the warmer days are going to melt it like we're getting now. It's going to start melting. But I called and I told Kim about what was going on not only in my neighborhood, off West Hollis Street, up by Gendron and White Plains because I go through there when I want to go down to Main Dunstable. And I just think it was horrible. But yet, the downtown got their sidewalks cleaned and the snow taken removed from the downtown, and the neighborhood didn't have it. Now, we can talk about the city 30 years prior to, and 30 years now, the taxes back then were a lot different than they are now on the Performing Arts Center, that if people don't live in the city, you know, if other communities would like to give some money towards our endeavor here, that's great. But the fact that we're not cleaning, we're not salting, and this is New England, and we just went through a rough two weeks of sub-zero temperatures, and now it's feeling like summer out there in the 30 degrees. It's beautiful out. But what's going to happen when the next storm comes? And the next storm comes, are we going to be skimping on this salt and sand? It's in the budget, maybe because we haven't changed the amount of what we need every year. We live in New England. It's basically been the same. That's according to Kim Kleiner, that she said things haven't changed. I know we're putting out new communities, more streets, where maybe we need to look at the salt budget. Maybe that needs to be a little bit more because we live in New England. So we have to be prepared for the worst, and yet, we need to make sure that the roads are clean and safe. And also, I'm going to be talking about this when I get to the Board of Public Works because on one side of West Hollis Street, my Ward 5 Alderman maybe should pay, listen to this, on West Hollis Street from where Ledgewood Hills down, that's where the sidewalks are, almost all the way down there, and plowed that. They plowed it on the other side where the old Matthew Thornton is, and some of that is grass. They plowed some of the grass area where the sidewalk is, and all the sidewalks mostly on the other side. I, I don't, and again, who's making up these roots here? Because I don't know. And so, you know, I just wanted to let everybody know that the quality of services in these storms have gone down. And also, I just got a text message from a friend of mine who's watching this meeting, and she said to please let everybody know that if they don't like the speakers, to make sure that they don't make faces because they see it on the other side of the television. Thank you very much.
Remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen? I'll start over here. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. Although I deeply respect the comments from the former Alderman, but I look at the storms that we had at hand, you've got to take into somewhat of the context what we were dealing with. For all intents and purposes, it's not coming from me, but from the meteorological people, we had a blizzard. And I do know the people that do tend to our streets are the same people who pick up our trash and do other duties besides. So basically, I would imagine a day in the life of a public works employee, in the morning, they're picking up the trash, and then they're doing the hours of duty that are on a, and yeoman's duty of being on a snowplow and doing it. And I think they did, under the conditions of a blizzard, did a fair job. And I guess to respect the comments, but looking at it, I think it's all relevant to each one of us on the quality of work that is done, it's a perception, and look at it. But I do respect the work that the people did, and I echo the mayor's comment and everything. It was a tough storm. We had very tough conditions, which is tough on the equipment, blow-zero weather. And that's to keep in mind of other divisions that work for our city. I would like to mention there was a fire on Lock Street to which a person was trapped in the building, and due to the combined efforts of the police, Nashville Police Department, and the Fire Department, that person was evacuated from the building, rescued, and med flighted out. I do not know the condition at this particular time, but they're fighting the fire in single-digit conditions. And so, and looking in general to the work that's done by all, at all of our city employees, particularly in the storm and blizzard conditions like this, I would just like to say, from the snow plowing to the good rescue that they did, the police and fire, the actions and everything, great job, and I appreciate the work that they do. Thank you.
Additional remarks? Alderman Tenza.
I just like to take this opportunity to thank Alderman Karen, who was the chair of the inauguration on Sunday, as well as Alderman Schmidt and Alderman Clemmons, who formed the committee, as well as the clerk and her staff, who also put together a great event along with the master of ceremonies, Mayor Donches. I know that received great feedback from a lot of people, friends and family, who got to experience something like that for the first time, were impressed with how smooth everything went, how interesting the ceremony was, and they were very happy to attend. So I just want to say thank you for all your efforts in that.
Alderman Melissa Golia.
Yes, I would like to echo Alderman Tenza's thank you to the committee, the inauguration committee. I also had many positive comments made about the event, so nice job. I think to follow up on what Alderman O'Brien had to say, it certainly was a very difficult time in, in the whole week in the city in terms of the timing of the storms and the holiday. And I think, again, many divisions across the, the city need to be commended. I know in Ward 8, they did their best to keep those hills clean and safe, and we had the luxury of having trash pickup. And I want to thank the residents of Ward 8 for trying to keep their both recycling and trash barrels in until the morning of trash pickup because, as we all know, the streets have gotten more narrow, and on the hills, we have the lack of visibility just because of the angles and the piling of snow. So thank you to people who were considerate of that and making it easier to navigate the neighborhoods. And as Alderman O'Brien mentioned, for our Fire Department, in all of these fires, the weather posed an additional challenge for them, and we think about all of the things the firefighters are doing, but we need to remember the people behind the scenes who are working very hard to maintain the equipment. And so, a thank you to them. Regarding the Fire Commission, Monday night, they elected a new chair. Commissioner Grant will be the chair, and Commissioner Gage will be the vice chair. And at that same meeting, Deputy Chief George Walker was promoted to Assistant Fire Chief as of April 1, and mechanic Stephanie was promoted to Superintendent of Fleet. And I see Mr. Joseph here, I believe, and I just would like to thank you for your service on the Citizens Advisory Committee. We will miss having you there, but thank you, and I know we'll continue seeing you around. So that is all I have. Thank you.
Additional remarks by members of the Board? Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for those kind words, but I think the big thank yous go to our city clerk, Tricia and Sue Lovering, for getting everything put together, and also the fact that the school department came through for us to do the pledge and the status banner. And I didn't know Mr. Joseph was here, but thank you for doing the pre-ceremony music. That was excellent. And I think this is the first time we decided to do corsages, wristband corsages for the ladies, and hopefully, you all appreciated it. I know Sue did because she didn't bleed as much trying to pin you.
[Laughter]
And on, on the note about snow plowing, it's very difficult. We all have a perception of what our snow plowing situation should be throughout the city, and I empathize with the speaker. But I would hope, as she mentioned, that with the warm weather coming up for the next few days, that our staff is getting out there and opening up those drains because we are expecting some major rainstorms. So we certainly don't want any flooding and things like that. But if you know that you have a manhole cover in your street, I know my husband went out and did the one on our street, that will help BPW and everybody else, but Fire and Police and BPW and all of those had a lot to do with this cold weather and considering it was the holiday when these bad storms came up. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
First, I just wanted to welcome my newer fellow Alderman. I was a first-term Alderman last time, and so I just wanted to say, don't be afraid and don't be intimidated. The city staff are very helpful. They'll walk you through questions that you have, so don't be afraid to ask. If you can't figure out which city staff to talk to, then definitely reach out to your fellow Alderman. They're also very helpful. Mayor Donches is very accessible as well. And the public is also very helpful. There's no way to keep track of everything that's going on in your community. So when the public is approaching you, sometimes they're exasperated because they know of a situation that you don't, and it's affecting them particularly. But they're also a very valuable source of information, so listen to them and try to do what you can. And if it seems like it's something you don't particularly know how to solve right away, then don't be shy about reaching out to others. To those who might have aspirations for future elections, I think getting involved in the city committees is certainly a way to do that and to get to know the process ahead of time so that you kind of know what you're getting into. And I would like to extend thanks to Michael Joseph for being willing to serve on the Citizens Advisory Committee and for being straightforward when he felt he needed to step down. Because I think an important part of having volunteers in committees is being able to maintain momentum and feel like everybody's there because they want to be there and because they have the time to be there. So it can be disconcerting to have a committee where there's a lot of people who aren't attending. So being able to know your limitations and focus your efforts and your enthusiasms is helpful in many, many ways. So I would encourage others to consider how they can help the city and volunteer, and also to be responsible about when you need to take on a different role. I would like to echo Alderman O'Brien's, as well as other Aldermen's, comments regarding police and fire during the storm and the holiday season. I've had, unfortunately, occasion to witness multiple emergency events that were responded to professionally without complaint and thoroughly each time. So I appreciate the work that's being done, and I just wanted to say that.
Additional remarks? Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, I just want to send my condolences out to the Vermin family. Judy and Dick, one of those families that provided a lot of volunteer input to the city, and, and they were very well-known in the real estate community, and she will be lost to the city. I was at the firemen's meeting the other night as well, just because I hadn't been to one before. And, and the one thing that struck me was that while we were waiting for the meeting to start, there was a fire in Lynn, Massachusetts, and they were all looking on their phones and showing their deep concern for their fellow firefighters, even in another state and another city. So firemen have a deep appreciation for the risks involved in that job, so shout out to them. And for all the people that are promoted, but especially to the new Assistant Chief, George Walker, congratulations. And to all the new Aldermen, welcome aboard, and we start out a new term.
Alderman Gidge.
I'm from Ward 6, and I'm also Ward 6 State Representative. And there are a number of state representatives in here, and this is a great opportunity, I think, for the city, especially if you're looking for anything. We have not, up there, we really haven't been going to meetings when there are bills that the city were just looking at or wanted. So hopefully, we can get together as Aldermen and also state representatives. And one other thing, thank you, Ms. Lovering, and all the people who put the inauguration on, because it really shows how together and how things can really work smoothly. And I think we've commented a few of the representatives on how we go up to the state and it's, yes, sit down, and that's it. It was very, very nice. I think the city of Nashua should be really happy that that is a particular type of an organization here. It's good. Thank you.
Alderman Wilshire.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome the new members of the Board, and thank you for allowing me to serve again as your vice president. And I also appreciate Alderman McCarthy stepping forward to be the president again. I think he does a pretty good job at that. I also would like to thank all the city workers who put themselves out there during blizzards and storms and, you know, on holidays while their families are home, worried about them and trying to enjoy their festivities. So I really, really appreciate the hard work all of our city employees put in, police, fire, you know, guys driving the plow trucks, picking up our trash. It's, it's tough work sometimes, and I really appreciate what they do. Also want to congratulate George Walker for his promotion to Assistant Chief. He'll be good. Thank you.
I, too, would like to thank the inauguration committee and the city clerk staff and our own staff. I think that, I've been to a bunch of those, and that one was about the smoothest I've ever seen. So it, it went very well. Thank you all. I want to welcome all of my new colleagues, and I think you may have seen this from the meetings, the orientation meetings we've had and stuff, but I, I really want to help you get what you want done, done. So if you are having problems figuring out who to talk to, as Alderman Lopez mentioned, please feel free to give me a call, and I'll direct you as best I can to how to deal with your problem. You know, whatever, whatever help you need to make things work, happy to oblige. Lastly, I do, I want to, we've talked a lot about, about fire and services and snow, and one thing didn't get mentioned tonight that I want to repeat, which is dig out the fire hydrants. I always go out and snowblow the hydrant. I was out, I did it the other day, and then the engine came by and they, you know, it saves them time, and if they don't get to it before there's a fire, then it takes, it adds numerous minutes to responding to the fire. And just remember, it may be your house they come to, so dig out, dig out the hydrants when, when it snows. Committee announcements? Alderman Melissa Golia.
P E D C next Tuesday, 7:00 PM.
Any others? Is there a motion? Alderman Wilshire. Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned at 8:17. Opposed? And we are adjourned at eight seventeen.